...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice for all.
I want to put this up here to welcome everyone to the meeting tonight. A couple announcements that I'd like to make prior to moving the public comment after my comments, after my announcements. First of all, I want everyone in room to know that this meeting is being recorded by Mr. Keen at his request. He does not represent an official record of the Board. It's something that he does, wants to do on his own. I just want to make sure that everyone knows that you're being recorded. The second thing is, is that last week, for those of you who are here, we got distracted from our agenda, and I'll take blame for that. And the reason being that we had some public comments that went much more in depth than they should have. And for that reason, tonight, and probably from here on out, we're going to remove the three-minute speaking rule, which is not unusual in a public meeting. Technically, you do not have to offer public comments if you want public comment, but we have to limit, we have to get our job done too. So I'm gonna make that announcement up front. And then the second thing is, is to kind of get the elephant out of the room, I guess, upfront. Yes, we did have an incident in the school district, done in the school district involving some of our students over the weekend. Approximately a dozen students who, over the weekend, met at superintendent's house, which is Bristol. Superintendent was away. The students had a party. There was alcohol involved. There were, there was smoking involved. I'm not quite sure what the, what the smoking was. I haven't been apprised of that, but there was, there was an incident. The school's responsibility, number one, is to safeguard. The students' identification and their confidentiality is utmost important to us. They are children that you send to our schools, that confidentiality is most important. The school's responsibility in an off-campus incident such as this, this is not the first time that this happened, it's probably not gonna be the last time that it happens. However, because it, it was not on school property, the school does not suspend the students per se. The only thing that the school can do is, in our policies, under the athletic policies, we do have some guidelines and procedures that we follow if athletes are involved. And a large number of these students were student athletes. They have been spoken with by the proper level of school authority, that being the high school principal's office. They have been advised of what they need to do to get back on track in school. My understanding is, the majority of them are elected to try to get back into activities in a timely fashion, but we have a policy that covers that. We have no other authority to deal with the students. It's a parental issue. If it obviously happened on school property, we have policies and procedures that deal with that. So it now, the school is, is dealing with it in that way. Parents, I know, are dealing with it in their way, which is appropriate. We also, just so that we all understand each other, there is a cooperative effort between the Bristol and the local police department and the school. Reviewing what happened, and there is that going on. So I have never seen so many rumors in so short a time, and thank that for email, I mean, because they just come fast and furious. But that's the statement that the Board's going to stand by tonight. We are not going to get into discussion because there's obviously the confidentiality issue of the students. There's obviously, could be personnel issues. So there's a whole myriad of things that we cannot and will not respond to tonight, but we certainly would give you the opportunity to make any statement that you would like to make at this time. As far as we're concerned, the issue's being dealt with. It's being dealt with at the appropriate level, and the actions that have been taken that I'm aware of at this point are appropriate. And with that, I will give the opportunity for the public to make a comment. Again, remember, we're gonna limit that to three minutes, and I'll open the floor. What is the school, uh, what do we make, excuse me, what do you make of public comment? If I'm Tom reading, we'd like to have your name and address for the record place.
Mark Myers. Why don't you do both of those?
Okay, thank you.
What is the school policy as far as athletics, as far as if it's substantial or just a small state, whatever it is? We have a zero tolerance policy, or is it one straight, two straight, three straight, and then the punishment's gonna operate now? What do we have for that?
Well, I would, I would ask-
For the athletes.
Yeah, for, okay.
Off, off campus, for the athletes.
Okay, for the athletes, and I would ask, I would yield to the high school principal to, to deal with that, and you might wanna, Jim might wanna respond with you on it.
Okay. Mr. Kaufman is here also, athletic director, I'm the principal, John House Myers. I'll give you a copy of this. This is from the handbook, it's online, Student Athletic Handbook. There's a first violation, second violation, third violation. First violation for a student athlete is twenty, they lose 25% of the, the games of that season. So that's why the number of games that a kid would be impacted could differ from student, student athlete to student athlete depending upon the story, sport that they were participating in. Right, follow? It's that X number of games is 25% of the season. There's also a rehabilitative component to that. There's a reflection paper that they must write. We expect that they will have at least three visits with our school counselors here. And, and there's a community service element, but most of these kids go far in excess of the community service that they perform within this community, so that's not really an issue. I believe, I haven't talked to Mr. Kaufman, I believe most, if not all, the kids have completed some of this work already because of the student athletes that participated. We allow them to practice with the team during this time. And this is in concert with the NHIA regulations as well.
Follow-up, and I'm gonna back Jim's head here, I'm sorry, Jim. But do, do coaches have any say-so? I mean, I'm gonna hold time, I'm like supposed to be right here. I mean, we had zero tolerance policy, but I played ball. I mean, you shoot up, you set season out, that was it. I mean, is it, any coaches input into these policies, or is that's it for the year? I won't be reading this. That's what it is, and coaches no say-so.
Well, I wouldn't say coaches no say-so. Coaches also have their own policies on the team. Whether zero tolerance kicked off first time, I, I don't believe any coaches do that. But an example would be if a student athlete was a captain of the team, for example, that wouldn't necessarily, I mean, that wouldn't be something that they would necessarily maintain in a situation as this. They would have the prerogative to consider removing that student from a captainship in a case like this.
And that's what I want, I mean, I don't have time, I don't have time on that, but one more question.
Well, if it's related to the, the policy, I'll, I'll wait for you.
Yeah, it's related somewhat, but okay.
Then we'll ask, Jim, you have a comment?
I just, yeah, so just amplify what John said. As far as coaches' input, no, this is the school district policy approved by the school board. Coaches, for an offense, cannot remove an athlete from the team. I need the followers approved by the school board, which is written there.
Of course, all right. Thank you. Other public comments? Yes, sir?
John Garen, 24.00 on Bo. I gave it for a specific reason, because I wanted to support Superintendent Kaskad. I think he has a bother of 42 years, four boys and a girl. I've had, this happened to me twice. And each of us in our own kind have to deal with these things in a manner that's personal to you and your son and my sons. And I don't think that that's a reflection in any way on your capabilities or actions here as superintendent. And that was my call, come here and say that. And also to mention my children's reaction to what took place because they wanted the privacy of their friends protected. And I was glad that you say that you would do that. What happens here as a school function is a matter of course between parent and child, superintendent and student, whatever staff are involved. It's not a matter of involvement with the person. So I want to thank you for doing it. That's why I came.
Thank you for coming. Other comments?
Bruce Burkey, 12 Bangor, Dr. I'd like to echo John's comments with respect to Superintendent Kaskad. And just to give you a little anecdote, Tuesday afternoon, I went to the high school soccer game, my son's on the team. And before I even reached the field, my wife and I, Dr. Kaskad came over to me, came over with us, and told us about it. And we hadn't heard anything up until that point. And he was very forthright, he was very, uh, he was just very compassionate about the situation. And he was visibly moved by it. And what I think John's comments about this situation reflecting on his ability via superintendent are two totally separate matters. And I hope he blew my thoughts there.
Thank you for comments. Any other comments from the floor? Seeing or hearing enough, we'll move on with our agenda. And then it came motion on the improvements of September 3rd.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? The next item on our agenda, we do have a brief educational focus topic tonight on the NECAPs. And are you gonna deal with that?
Yes.
There's a handout that the board received, but maybe you don't have some time for that.
There should be a handout, and I hope that the public, however they hand it up, sometimes they don't make it in, but it's about our NECAP science results. If it's been in the board, it is?
Yes.
The NECAPs New England Common Assessment Program. It is part of the No Child Left Behind initiative assessments. This is the second year this science has been given. The interesting thing about this NECAP science task is it has a real aspect of its meaning science. It has an inquiry task that is basically setting up an experiment and running it like a typical experiment. I won't go too far, except for if you go down the graph, when you look at the percent proficiency graph, I'm sorry, I didn't, my little computer's in better color on the computer. We give this at four, eight, and 11. And you can see that the middle column, I believe, is Bo nine. You can see the, the fourth grade went up a point, probably not significant, but we are significantly overstate averages, 14 points overstate averages there. The big story in this is at Bo Memorial School, you can see that, at Bo Memorial School, they rose from 34 to 45% proficiency in one year. There was a spot per se left to be picked because that's what they do when they have good results like this. But I think, I asked Mr. Swafford, what he thought this was a curriculum change, or what, what was going on, and he really said, the first year perhaps the students didn't take it that seriously. And it's not an assessment that counts in a sense for what they do. And so they, his students have incentive programs as well as looking at the curriculum. And so that his head wouldn't get too inflated, I told him that he was just getting up to where the high school was scoring. And if you look at the, the next side, you'll see that the high school continues to score strong again, you know, we're scoring significantly over what the state does, and we have improvement from year to year. I think especially significant at the high school level, when they don't have the subgroups analyzed out, is the inquiry task was especially strong. So I think we are teaching science the way science should be taught. You can read through my comments there, I don't think there'll be any difference in what I shared poorly. The last graph that you look at is the staff proficiency graph. The one thing you may notice is that from last year to this year, we do not have as many students in the highest proficiency level, the level four. And we, we had a fairly small percentage to begin with, and there may be some kids right on the cusp of a cutoff, but I don't think that's particularly significant. I think that's gonna vary year to year as you, as you go by. Next steps, we review this at the building level, we're looking at formally District Science Committee to make sure we can collaborate with them on science. I did get a great email from Don Gage, our high school math and science dean. And I'd just like to go over, you know, how the high school actually uses, which I think is, tells you how seriously we take the NECAP exams. They take all of the released items, not all of the items on the test are released, but they can take the released items, they review what each student answered for each question. We are able to do an item analysis, and they look at each question to see the percentages for each answer selected, and they look for a trend. Is the student getting distracted by a certain distraction? Is this one that we mostly selected the right answer, therefore our curriculum would be well? We see, you know, if there's a single distractor that's pulling it out, and we analyze item by item to see how we adjust our, our science curriculum. He gave an example of last year, we found our students did not do all the questions that related to energy flow, and so they readjusted the curriculum to touch a little more on that, on that question. They are doing some work at, very good work as a science committee at the high school. They're, they're looking at graphing. That's a skill that they felt was weak, and they wanted to work on that. And so, you know, I just wanted to give you a flavor of how, you know, I give you the district kind of overall dragline approach, but that buildings definitely do take this test very seriously, they do a lot of good work on it.
You have a color?
Got a color?
You have a color chart? You didn't, you didn't read the color.
No, I'm sorry, it's good.
Is the state looking at the test itself at all? I mean, in general, this is fairly low in terms of percentages. And I happen to be in the unique situation of having three students who took this test in, I guess this was last spring, right? And one of my students is, has already done several AP science classes. That student did the same on the test, I mean, plus or minus one point, as the sisters. And I wondered about that. This is very uncharacteristic, because if you look at his other standardized test scores, they're, they're way, way higher than the sisters. And yet, on this test, they were all the same. And knowing that the state, the state results are so low in general, I wonder if the state or that, or whoever creates the NECAP is looking at the test itself.
Interesting question, with the amount of budget cuts that have gone down, not the state level, we're lucky to have someone drawing the lights right now. They've had to cut their science specialists, their English specialists, and so I do not think that there's anyone that has to be working with this test. The other thing that's very interesting, if you look at the national level, and we've been talking about a little bit of what we think's coming down, the new president, Barack Obama, through his Secretary of Education, Courtney Duncan, has started to say that he wants to reauthorize the E of, you know-
ESEA.
ESEA, which is basically where No Child Left Behind came from. So, you know, so I don't think states are gonna jump on this test to do any revision of it, because you don't know what's coming down from, from the state. Having said that, you know, a test is a created item by a bunch of people who sit around and, and try to, you know, using their best, their best thinking. They look at the GLEs, they try to create questions that'll work. They do analyze it year to year at the same, of course, they release items, so they always have to create new items. And they're doing the same analysis that we are. What was the specific item analysis of the specific questions? Are they good questions? And they, they continue to work that. The difficult thing, and I'll brag on your children if you didn't, is when you get to the high end of any test, it is very difficult to sort out the smart from the really, really, really smart. Because the test is more robust in the middle of the test, because you would have to have, make the test incredibly long, and have a lot of very differing hard questions at the very high end to do that.
Yeah, but they didn't score proficient with distinction or anything. They were just right around the, just getting into proficient, all three of them. And that was interesting to me.
I gotta look at the specifics.
What's that show involved in the NECAP?
New England Common Assessment Program is Maine, Vermont-
Rhode Island.
I'm sorry, let me back up. New Hampshire, Vermont, Rhode Island, and now Maine is joining one. It was originally formed because New Hampshire wasn't large enough to create any of the assessments, really, no company would be interested, they were too small to create the No Child Left Behind assessments.
We'll pick up on Ann's question, do other states score significantly better than New Hampshire?
In the science NECAP, I'd have to get back to you on that. There are, of course, there are different scores for different states, there are different demographics for different states. Rhode Island, having much more of a urban demographic, tends not to score as well, period. And then Vermont and New Hampshire will go back and forth with each other, but I'd have to specifically look at science to see what's going on there.
Well, that might suggest, if no one's at the top, it might suggest that no one could get them.
Well, that's why I was wondering about the test itself.
Ann's question.
Just a comment that, you know, this is a test that three states have gotten together to collaborate on and try to adjust their various curriculums to call it a single, to formulate a single test, that will test the populations of all three states. And I think sometimes you get away from specific content knowledge, Ann, and get back to basics like, like this test was testing how you set up a lab, how you go through procedure. And those things, there's gonna, are gonna be relatively the same regardless of what level of science we're studying. So I think, you're right, it probably does need to be looked at, but I think you have to take it with a grain of whatever test we may solve, because it's a compilation of experience used in these states. And as he said, so would the government. So I think there's a limit to what tests we tell you. So again, it's not, it's not a final piece of information as it turns one thing or another that you, it's part of the package that goes along with all of the other testing, the classwork.
And I, and I'd add to that, I'm not so sure that three years is long enough based to-
Two years.
Two years long enough. I mean, you know, you'd like to have at least five years data, if I could, to, to look at and balance things out. I mean, that's very short times for this question.
But it is encouraging that there's improvement from when you do it, because I think that does show that in particular, things that are going on in the district, like teaching practices, curriculum, specific, specific subject areas are being dealt with, and that does show the results.
Any other comments?
No, I can't, but sugar free.
One more.
The NECAP testing does start, takes place the sixth and seventh at the high school for math, writing, and reading.
Moving on to the superintendent's report.
You have a written report in your, in your hands. You know, we've had to deal with a lot of issues that began this year that aren't necessarily directly related to education, H1N1, the president's speech to students. Please, you know, in my, I ask you, please take a look at the administrative reports, there was a lot of stuff that I can't cover. And then there's a lot of information in there about some of the big rocks that are working on, some of the things we were doing, the construction, that maybe when we get to committee work, we can talk about how the program committee can, can get a word down there. And I won't comment on the action issue, because we'll, we'll be actually agenda, we'll have a discussion about the action items there. And then, if there are any questions under the report, Mr.?
Just, I, I wanna compliment the administration, the building principals, superintendent for getting the information out on H1N1, I think there's been a lot of information sent home to parents. I think there's a lot of thought that's gone into that, and I realize that it's a collaborative effort with the state and, and local authorities, but I don't know how much more prepared you can be. And so I was pleased to see your information go out. I do have one question. If it became necessary to offer inoculations, is our plan to do that, we're now?
That's actually not our plan. We actually had a meeting yesterday with the local area health, I don't have the name, I was a little bit distracted, but, no, I'd have to go back. But basically, they're working with a three-town area, Bo High School is what's called a POTS, point of distribution. We have to put an emergency plan in place that if they activate that, they will give us adjustment time training, and we will be able to unionize, I believe, between like five and 1,000 people if, if we activated that plan. Right now, the plan is not in any sort of workable condition, and that's why these, we have the help from the, I'm sorry, I don't have the, pardon me, but the names of the people who are helping us support this stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions? The superintendent's report.
Business superintendent's report. You have my written report. I still do not have, I thought I'd have a date for, for tax rate setting, but I still don't have one for that. There's a couple of holdups at the town level and the school level, but more of a state issue. The towns forums, that they need, have one, are, are in, as best as they can have them in. Ours are all in, complete and approved. So we're just awaiting some, some additional stuff. That kind of becomes the kickoff, and you get that set, and you kind of put last year behind you, and you kind of move forward into this budget here, but it's kind of overlapping a little more than, than usual. We have our budget calendar in place, I'm gonna go see the, the budget committee next Tuesday. We'll see Bob Glan, who's there Tuesday of this week, so it kind of splits us up, so I guess, I think the tag team is on the same day or something, but we're going on the sixth. And then I just have a request for facilities, when we get to facilities, a set of committee meetings. And in addition to my report, I included, as the board requested, kind of an overview of the stimulus act, what it meant for Bo, some of the various programs, and how much money went to the state, and how much came to Bo as the board requested.
So are there dates for the town board committee, is it there and how set?
I don't believe they've set their dates for when they're actually gonna do their work on the town and school budget. I, I know, I'm, I'm going on Tuesday. They, they're starting to put their calendar together, certainly with the change from May town meeting to March town meeting, they've condensed their work schedule, they're gonna be working on two budgets at essentially the same time, so they've got a lot of potential conflicts, so they wanna work that out.
I'll let them comment, 'cause they've got a report on that. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Question for Joy.
Sure. Do we know how much we either gained or lost from state anticipated state revenue or state revenue that we have by year? In that figure, we still down 50,000?
Yeah, because essentially what we had thought was going to happen in terms of catastrophic in building aid actually did occur. The one thing that was a bit of a surprise, I anticipated building aid being prorated slightly. That was fully funded in the state approved budget, but the proration was going to be fairly small, be about 300,000 in building aid. We were thinking that proration was gonna be two or three percent. The big, the big proration was catastrophic aid, about 13%. For us, that meant around 40,000. You couple that with the change on the expenditure side in terms of the retirement system and the employer rate for group one, as well as group two, but group one, that affects us, about 50,000. And the impact of the state budget, I think was pretty considerable. And the impact of the state budget, I think was pretty considerable, or more considerable than usually is. Certainly less so than on municipal, so, um, both in Bo and, and statewide.
The reason I asked them, the municipal said they tell us that, don't worry about it, because they made it, they, they made us whole by increasing the school board side. Apparently in this community, that didn't work out that well.
Well, a lot of communities, and I think what, what the, the governor and the legislature are saying is they fully funded that. And, and, and that was a significant increase in that aid program statewide, about $80 million more, 160 million over the bienniums. Bo's share of that, our advocacy grant is about 4 million, just less than 4.1 million. We got $28,000 more in that aid program based on the formula, which is about 0.7 percent. There's a number of communities that got the maximum increase, which was retained. The maximum is half of 50 percent. For some communities, that's millions of dollars. And absolutely, that's a, that's a huge benefit for them. But for us, you know, our aid was slightly less than 4.1, it's now slightly more than 4.1. Uh, certainly, if you couple that in with the proration and things, the figures I gave you, you, you could, you could say that that's $28,000, you know, better. I philosophically do not count that. Because my estimation, that before they really started working on the budget, they created that formula. My anticipation is that, sure, if you wanna create a formula based on four things, you're gonna fund them. I mean, that's just what, you know? So my thinking is, well, yeah, you funded that. Um, we won't talk about how they funded that, because that's a different discussion. But, um, I just, I just think that was something that they had already made legislation to do.
Sure says that if the J U A decision by the Supreme Court puts them against the state, that will be left whole? Or will we see other cuts in the state?
Uh, um, if the, the $110 million is used from the medical malpractice fund that, uh, the, the governor has tapped to cover the budget. Yes. And then the paper law, there'll be a court, there's a court case pending at the New Hampshire Supreme Court. I think what happened last year, when there was a budget fold that needed to be filled, and there were some aid programs at the state level that were prorated after tax rates set, building aid, add aid, or change. That was unprecedented, had never been done before. Um, no, I can't say that if there's a significant issue in some kind of revenue that the state is anticipating, I can't say that those figures will get changed. And I can't say that there's not gonna be a change after tax rate is set. Which is a significant issue for us and for towns, because once a tax rate is set, it's set. And you, you're not gonna go back and change that. So, and a significant portion of our revenue comes from that setting, or about 75 percent. So, you know, I mean, it's a lot of uncertainty right now, and that's part of it. Uh, you know, significant parts of it are, if you look at the July and August revenue figures of the state there, they did not meet what they anticipated including the budget. If that continues, you know, it is an interesting time.
Well, let's, uh, let's talk about another concrete concept. Um, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, what's the status on that?
We, uh, we have two, two pools of money in that act that are going to flow into Bo. Our, our, the I D A part is B and I D A is C. About 300 and 10,000, uh, is what we're gonna get in those two programs. Special education driven, that's why we've included a lot of material on that. Lot of restrictions on how you can spend that money. Um, we have a grant into the state that has been approved with some modifications that, that, that Dan's working on with people in the state. Um, the interesting part of that is although we are approved, the mechanism for drawing that money into school districts across the state is not live right now. And that is scheduled to go live by October 10.
So, that could come true.
No, we really haven't done very much in that range. Um, we have spent a, a few of those dollars because it was some summer projects. Worked on some stuff that we were very confident was going to be approved as part of our grant, because it's word for word, what's one of the recommendations in the grant. Figured that would be pretty safe there. Um, there are school districts in the state that are hurting on that drawdown because they're very small. Things have significantly cash broke, which is not, we, we, we'd be okay, I think, weathering that. Um, there's a separate pool of money, there's a technology portion, they just released the art, the math. We're gonna begin, you know, looking at whether or not we're going to apply for those funds, if you qualify for that. However, emphasis is given to high need schools. I'm not sure we've been there.
Is there a date, a cutoff date that you have to have your, your money received by?
No, because it's a cutoff date you have to have your money spent by. But not a cutoff date when you have to have it received by.
So are you seeing that happening in the first year?
Uh, the, the, the I D A portion, which is the only one we've been approved for, so that's usually the only one I should probably talk about, uh, that end date is 2000, June 30, 2011. I'm, my, my guess is that some of that would be spent in this full year and some of it's in the next.
Any other questions? Next item of business, uh, manifestive financials.
I'm gonna move this in two separate, um, the first one I'm gonna move is July 31st, period, July 31st. I'm gonna ask for $2,407,731, 92 cents.
And motion in the second discussion? Overfavored?
Aye. And the second is the period in August 31st, 2009. Move it in the amount of $1,415,813, 26 cents.
Motion in second discussion? Going with her?
Aye.
Going down through the personnel items, uh, we have probably no resignations, no retirements, no higher fees. Uh, the item that we have is just superintendent leave requests.
You have some complicated leave requests, um, to consider to, um, these fall outside of the policy and therefore require, uh, court action. And the first one, revive, it's taken separately, Colleen Lee, formerly Snow. Uh, if you look at this, um, there, uh, this is a family event, um, in, uh, it has to do with her recent marriage and name change. Uh, and it has to do with her husband, it's a different holiday than us. And so she is asking for her three personal days to be granted, December 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, for the purpose of travel. And that runs up against a vacation, so she asks to approve those, so it's a personal days that run up against a vacation.
Does that leave request recommend by the superintendent?
This is recommended by the superintendent.
Motion on the request?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Placing discussion. Since, is this, um, is this a normal procedure? I mean, do we grant these regular? Okay.
We have even had discussions, uh, before, but it is in the, uh, the motion.
It's in contract?
Yep.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The second one is probably one of the more complicated ones that, um, I've ever dealt with in this board. We have a wonderful event happening. Mary Feld is hoping to add to their family. Uh, they have been looking to adopt for quite a while. And their adoptive baby has, takes her two children out of Russia. And she says that basically they're in North Pole, a little bit south, and that's where their children are. The difficulty here is, um, the, uh, this request, the person needs to go to, uh, Russia to set up the adoption process, and then has to go back to Russia to complete the adoption process, and then, uh, come back and, um, will need to settle the children in the United States. Um, and so it's a little bit, the dates of the leave are a little bit, uh, flexible, because of course they have to work around all those sorts of things. Uh, the issue is, is, um, what kind of leave is she requesting? Uh, we do not have anything that we would call a maternity leave. Uh, when we look at the contract, there is a provision for, uh, child wearing slash adoption leave. But when we look at that provision of the contract, it's after the, it's after the fact. After the adoption's taken place, it would be more what I would consider bonding leave, where the, uh, person takes like the rest of the year or possibly the complete, uh, next year off to bond. That's, that's not really what they're asking for. They're asking for the leave to complete the adoption. The second place that this would fall under would be the Family Medical Leave Act. Uh, the person is absolutely entitled to, uh, up to 12 weeks, weeks of family medical leave. Uh, we could require that that be taken continuously, that it all be taken in one chunk, 12 weeks of leave, but I don't think that's in the best, uh, interest of, of the district. Uh, the problem is, is when we look at our childbirth leave, it falls under our sick policy. Um, or it falls under sick leave. Now, my wife would not like it that we call childbirth a sickness, because it's not. Uh, it's a wonderful event. And, uh, but, but when a person gets time off for childbirth, it is normally six weeks. And that is taken out of the sick leave accumulated time to, uh, to heal and get well. Um, and six weeks is kind of the, the standard time given. Uh, we do not have anything in our contract that would be close to that for the adoption process. And that was a, um, that was, uh, kind of the request, is that isn't an adoption like having a baby? That, uh, you know, there are things that have to happen, there's still settling of the child, there is the, you know, all the things that have to happen, especially in this case, going to Russia. So, the first request is just to take the time off, and I think, uh, that would be under the Family Medical Leave Act. And I would, you know, I don't think that there's much we can do about that. I think, uh, if we need to grant that, it's out of the law. The second request is, and this has to be thought about deeply because of its contract implications, uh, is that to allow the employee to use their sick leave to complete the adoption process, similar to how we would allow an employee to use their sick leave to, um, have a baby medically. So that's what I am requesting. Uh, it does, we, I think if we did that, we would have to try to do a three-way agreement with the B D A to say that this is non-binding, because really that is a, um, uh, that is a piece of, uh, negotiate, it's a negotiated benefit. We may not wanna grant that negotiated benefit on a case-by-case basis, because it's part of negotiations. Uh, but that is, uh, the request of the superintendent that, uh, and actually, you know, you say, would I make that as a recommendation? I would like to make that as a request and have the board discuss it, whether or not that they felt that was applicable. And if it's not, then I would say we grant the Family Medical Leave Act.
Clarification?
Yes.
On the Family Medical Leave Act, there's no money involved, as there is a significant?
That is an unpaid leave.
It doesn't necessarily have to be, but in this case, it's an unpaid leave for everybody in the system?
If, if, under this circumstance, um, you're right, let me back up. Under certain circumstances, illness of the person themselves, childbirth actually falls under F M L A, caring for a parent, things like that, there are certain kinds of leaves that would be eligible to use your sick leave and some that would not be eligible. This is one that is not. Um, because sick leave governed by the contract, this doesn't fall under what is applicable to be used for sick leave.
So you're, you're saying that, breaking this request down into three parts, that the week in November would be, would need the requirement for the Family Medical Leave Act?
No, the whole request would need the requirement for the Family Medical Leave.
Twelve weeks is the one?
Yeah, 12 weeks.
Okay.
I think it can be broken up.
And it can be.
But that's unpaid separately.
Unpaid.
Okay.
Family Medical Leave Act, 12 weeks unpaid, we can allow it to be broken up.
But why concerned with the, the children in the classroom, assuming this is a classroom teacher?
Yes, and we are definitely concerned as a, as a special ed teacher. Uh, there's a case that we have to cover, I'll talk to, uh, Chris Gibbons.
They actually broken up works better than a student's leave, because of the position that she's in. It actually isn't the destiny she's to school to have it broken up that early in the month.
But then at the end, it's gonna be all at once, six weeks.
And it could be all, but having the 12 weeks.
We have to grant this leave under the Family Medical Leave Act. Take their personal.
So, but she's still asking for two, two hundred dollars more than I do.
The, the question is, the district does have, the district does have the right to say that the leave will be taken continuously, and that there will not be a break. You have that right. I don't believe that what Deb is saying is that she doesn't think that that's a good idea.
It also doesn't look like it could. So, how can anybody?
No, it's not supposed to be in there, it's just not my recommendation at all. Our recommendation is to grant Family Medical Leave Act, as requested, and of course, that's not much of a concern. The real request is, is, you know, can we allow the employee to use their sick time like we would do in a maternity leave? Aids for a person actually pregnant and having a baby. And if the answer is no, and I understand that, and I've talked to the employee about it, because that does fall outside of the contract, then we will, we will live with that.
But we could grant that as paid sick leave, such as a maternity leave, with, with the caveat that it's non-binding and that this needs to come.
You would have to work, we'd have to work out with the three-way group between us, the, the, and the, and the.
Yeah, I, I, I think given negotiations and the time that we spend on these issues, that might not be a good way to, to go. And frankly, I think we need to maybe look some other creative ways. But, I, I, I just think when you say, you know, it's non-binding, it always comes back to fight this in place of something like. And that's, would be my concern.
If a bio parent has a child and they take F M L A, they're allowed to use sickness under the contract?
Correct. Because it, because, I mean, let's, you know, take a, let's do that hypothetical. You know, employee has a baby. I get the doctor's note that says, this teacher can't come to work for six, eight, 10 weeks, depending on how the delivery line, C-section, usually eight. Um, I get that. Because you are, in a legal sense, disabled, not able to work, sick leave is available. Uh, it does fall under F M L A as well. Um, so it, you, you can run those things continuous at the same time, but regular childbirth is a sick leave eligible situation. Because like personal illness would be, or, you know, somebody, you know, had a surgery or something.
As Dean said, this, you know, what is, it doesn't qualify under, what's, what's the request this week?
But, and it doesn't, well, it doesn't qualify, a, a request for paid maternity is not something that is in the contract, and it is not something that we have done in past situations.
What happens with the paternity leave? Where the, the father doesn't keep them, can use or supply them?
The paternity leave that we have is also under the childbirth leave, which is a longer term leave, like from when you do this to the end of the year, unpaid.
Correct. But you could, you, you can use, if you wanted to do paternity leave, an employee under the contract is granted five days of family sick leave. The district in the past have allowed that, that could be used, but it's out of the contract, that's five days. And that's all that's available to.
Can we do that?
She has family sick leave.
Sure.
It's all capped by the number of leave days she has in there. You're not giving her anything beyond the leave days that she's accumulated, you're just allowing her to leave, to use the sick leave for this.
Right, I think we're just talking about whether the sick leave is applied. And my intervention would be the sick leave not applied, because that is clearly addressing physical illness and physical disability. But I might go for the five-day cap, use a father like that, because obviously father is not in the physical.
But that's, but that's available to her anyway. Because when she gets back, when she gets back with the children, if they're sick or they need medical care, they can take those five days. So you're not really guaranteeing her anything by that, you're just, and if that's the way, and I understand that, and I explain to the employee that that's, may happen, um, you know, this is a request for family medical. you know, this is a request for Family Medical Leave Act, but I told her that I would talk to the board about what I told her.
My own opinion about this is, and it might be different, I think, I guess I would like to hear more why we would not want to have a three-way negotiation. I understand it could be precedent-setting, but if we had a specific statement that it was not precedent-setting, why we would not, why we would not want to try and work this out with the three parties involved. And my sense is anybody who adopts a child, having done that myself, deserves all the support they can possibly get. But that's my opinion.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm still a little confused at what you are looking at. Are we looking at any paid leave?
No, not right now, except for what the employee is already entitled to. The employee has three personal days.
So it's the only issue that these are not continuous?
No, the issue is whether or not we will allow sick leave to be taken instead of.
This is, right now, this is unpaid leave. It's three-personal, and she would have available five family sick days.
Right, right. But let's, let's not say though, all right, to be fair, let's not say it's uncharted. We have had employees in the past adopt children in the district. This is not the first adoption that we've ever had. Now, it's been several years. The last adoption that we had, according to the research that we did, was an adoption that took place in March. It was a memorial school teacher several years ago, took place in March. The person requested to take the rest of the year off. That was granted, and it was granted unpaid. Now, this is certainly different than that, and, you know, it is, but that, I mean, there, you know, there is a, you know, there is a, you know, this isn't the first adoption. Now, I, I'm going to.
It's not different international.
I'm going to put the other hat on and say, I do agree that there's a support part for our employees, and I intend to try to err on that side, but to know that you've had that adoption in the district board.
And we've had international.
Absolutely. Most of them are.
Right.
Most of them are.
Have any of them asked to be split like this before? I don't remember.
Well, I, I mean, I only, I looked at the last one. I looked at that particular one. That one was very, it looked on paper to me like the request was very simple. The resolution was very simple. It was, I'm going to adopt a child. I would like my last day of work to be this date. I would like to take the rest of the year off and see you next year. And everyone said, great, we'll see you in August.
And there's even, these, these dates are general too, and we're probably not going to know exactly when it's going to.
So.
Let's, let's try this. Why don't we explain what the difference would be with sick leave this year?
Oh, sure. You know, what I would understand it to be would be, the board said, you can use sick leave like it was regular birth, a biological birth. It would essentially be going from a maximum of five days of sick leave that could be used to six weeks, six, seven, eight weeks of, of sick leave. Now, I don't know if the person, you know, we have, since I've been here, we have a disability, maternity, post-birth time of twelve weeks. At delivery, very bad. But that is the maximum that I've seen since six or twelve weeks. The range. But it would essentially be, you would be paying for most, if not all, of the leave that was requested, rather than paying for essentially one person.
Which is contrary to contract limit right now?
Correct. There's no provision for paying adoption. Correct.
Well, I don't think, you know, we've, we've been in this situation before, and we've always gotten in trouble when we do not follow the contract.
And I think that, just, just as a reminder, we do have to hire a sub.
That's right.
In addition to sick pay, if we would allow the sick pay. So we think it's a difficult proposition.
I mean, the cost to, the cost to the board would essentially be, let's, let's say it's eight weeks, and the person's eligible for one. We'd essentially be paying a maximum of thirty-five additional days of pay if you were to say, we're going to allow you to use your sick days.
To her.
To her. You're going to pay for the sub.
And then they're going to pay for the sub.
I mean, you're going to pay for the, if it's unpaid or not, you're just going to pay for the sub. I mean, we're going to have a sub. I mean, so that's regardless of what, you know, is going on.
So Dean, rub this by me again on the Family Medical Leave Act.
There's no real choice. We have to agree.
For the.
Believe yourself when you're going to grant it. The only question for us is whether or not she should be allowed to get sick pay for it.
And that would be a vote that, I mean, that would be a vote that you may not even want to entertain if you just say consensus isn't. Now, no, we're not going to do that, but you should do this. You could vote to allow that, and that is the question.
Do you carry that sick leave as a liability on the books anyway? Anybody's approved sick leave?
We do. However, the approved liability on the books is much less than what the employee would make per day because of separation, providing under the teacher's contract, you work five years, you get twenty-five dollars a day, up to a maximum of one hundred and twenty days accumulated. So certainly what we're carrying in terms of the liability when you see an audit report is much less than what the person could potentially, if they use them while they're for, I guess, the leave.
I guess my point is that people have earned that leave by working for the district for some period of time.
Awesome.
And that, that leave, the financial burden is accounted for at some point in time, that's hoped for. I mean, what if, what if somebody had to use this?
Correct. We, they would be using it. Can we have that handled? Can we ask? Definitely.
So the issue really comes down to, we don't think it, that this portion of the board doesn't think it's a great idea because it would set precedent, given that we are going into negotiations at this time. No, I'm not, because we're going to negotiations, I think, I think our best history is, is that we try to adhere to the contractual language of the district. And if there are changes that come up that are trending, we will negotiate that at the proper time. But to do these things individually, unposted.
I think because we also have a contract that's a different, to me, that, that is a problem that should be approached.
Not by agreement?
Further discussion? Let's try to move it along. Do you want a motion? Or do you want to go back table and discuss it, or is the feeling of the board they want to prove it?
Well, let's just clarify. I don't think.
The motion would be put to have the superintendent work for the BDA around an agreement to allow the use of sick leave for this leave. That would be, if it's, if it's not that, then we don't, we don't trust them.
I would make that motion, but I would add to that, and in those negotiations, it would be clear that this is not precedent-setting practice, and that there would be a written side agreement that specified that.
We, we have a motion. We have a second. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Did you get that? Let's do that again. All in favor of the resolution? Say aye please.
Aye.
Is that your time? Can I hear anyone else? All opposed? So it's one more for the.
This will be granted its family, the Family Medical Leave Act, as requested. Now, if you don't want to apologize for putting the board in a tough spot to have to deal with that, but at the same time, an employee comes to me and asks me to bring this on the board, and clearly I have an obligation to try to.
Understood.
Now, I just have to make one final comment. Although we are not in a position to allow this instructor to use sick leave for this, I'd like to extend any support that we can towards the entire process. Anything that we can do, certainly support for actions, which is kind of what is in.
The last leave request is asking these three personal days again surrounding a vacation. This one, a vacation. It's a family function again, and they are splitting. The problem is, of course, there's different school systems have different vacations, so they're splitting. The family has made the plan, so they split the time between the two vacations, so people are getting deeper. So again, the request is to take the personal days next to a vacation, which is a board request.
They have a motion. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Hear your second. Any discussion? All in favor? Next item on our agenda, at our last meeting, we discussed the four inch and mag hut committee studying the alternative governance. There was considerable discussion on that, and I guess we need to see tonight to wrap. Given anything else has not been played, or do we have any comments or? I think that we want to talk about regarding that.
I really talked about it last time. You know, after doing quite a bit of research, it was quite discouraging in terms of what we could accomplish by having to deal with that. And we were, I think we were going to see about the use of the selectmen, which hasn't happened yet either. And I don't know what they're thinking. Do I have to know?
Well, and, and we have not heard back from, from the selectmen. I will email again, but do we want to, do we want to consider taming that until we have our meeting with the selectmen? Or do we want to?
I think that was the intention before, so let's just.
Okay, can we do that, Dean? We'll tail that, and I'll send another email. Panzi, maybe you'd like to talk about, the last meeting we got, as I indicated earlier, we had a little sidetracked. And we really, we felt we didn't do justice to our goal setting process. Panzi said that she and I would review it because many of the items on our goal setting remained pretty similar to what we've done in the past. We still haven't achieved all the goals that we accepted on last year's. Unfortunately, due to Panzi's work schedule and due to my lack of work schedule, we didn't get together. And we will do that for the next meeting, or and we'll get that information to the superintendent in plenty of time for him to do it. Agreed?
Agreed.